We're gonna openly the hearing. First item on the agenda is the approval of the executive session minutes from March 10th, Do we have a motion on the minutes from executive session, March 10th, 2016?
Motion to accept those minutes.
What have you?
There's a motion.
Oh. Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. Minutes are accepted. At this point, I'd ask Mr. Shepherd to read the first hearing.
Yep, I have one.
Yep, I have two.
The town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, which is tonight, April 14th, 2016, at 6:30 at the town offices. In Abington, the petition of Mark and Maria Jenkins, 38 Crabtree Lane, Abington, for a 13.5 side yard variance to attach a two-car garage on the dwelling to a, at 38 Crabtree Lane, under Abington zoning by law section 175-29 and 175-69. The property is located on accessories plan 37, plot 119, in the R30 zone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, you have the floor, sir.
So, we had actually went through this a couple of years ago, and the procedure was actually, at the time, we were all getting into a two-car with a room over with a single bath.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, so things have changed. It was for my in-laws at the time, and I followed them, I was six, so he's actually gotten a lot better. And then, things have changed, again, with my daughter. Just to kind of go in the background, my daughter essentially was gonna go to a state school, however, she was accepted to university, which is obviously a different cost of them up. Therefore, she's graduating in May, so I'm deciding we're gonna go, this is our, this is our treat, I guess.
Excellent.
I brought, actually, my neighbors on, that's on each side of me, Mr. Carter and Mr. Neville behind me. They approved.
So, is this basically very similar to what you were looking for a few years ago, minus the residence space of it?
This is exactly the same, yes. So, it's 24 by 24.
Okay, when was that, I forget? Yes?
Just to clear up something here, I think, the, it's 34, the, the offset of the house right now is 34.2 feet, and I believe the backside of that garage is 24 feet. The front is, is 27, four and a half, and I think that's too a lot for the stairway, and...
Oh, yeah, because it was an existing bump out.
There's existing bump out, probably, I guess, 18 to 24 inches, something like that, and you got, well, I've got this, but you can't really tell too much, but it's calling for the front to be 27, four and a half. My guess is that three, roughly three and a half feet is the width of that stairwell bump, bump out area. So, we're probably, the back of the garage is probably 24 feet wide, it's 24 feet deep. It's a, do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's 24 here, right? It's probably 24 here, that's a typical two-car, except you're, you're dealing with this business right here, which is probably three and a half feet, something like that, which is why you get 27, four and a half. Net, net, so from here to here is 24 feet, not 27, four and a half.
Okay.
So, you're not really asking for a 13 and a half yard, a 13 and a half foot variance. It's really 34.2 minus the 24 leaves you 10 foot two.
10 foot two.
You're looking for 10, 10.2 feet. So, you're really looking probably for a variance, you're asking for what, 9.8 foot variance is probably what you're asking for, it's less than what you've shown here.
Right. So, he's asking for, ultimately, he's asking for less than what we've advertised?
Less than what's advertised to.
Okay.
By three and a half feet, roughly.
Yeah, we can judge that by what.
Exactly.
Because we can't give him more than what he's advertising.
No, he's asking for less. It just appears he's asking to be closer to the lot line than he really is. He's gonna be roughly 10 feet off, and it's also noteworthy, I think, if he were to detach this and put it 10 feet away from the principal structure, moving it back, he would be allowed to be 10 foot off on an accessory structure.
As a detached structure.
Where it's detached. Doesn't seem to fit as well here with the, the existing layout, but I just wanted to make those two notes.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That's it.
Excellent. At this point, then, actually, do you folks have any?
Yeah, one of the things that we have to show for a variance is that this is hardship, because a variance runs with the land, which means that future owners receive that benefit of variance with it. And so, in terms of hardship, it's not really a financial situation, or I understand, your mom was sick, I understand you want to do something for your daughter, et cetera. It's something that relates specifically to the parcel size and shape. And I explain this to you because the bylaws are sacred within a community, because they're voted in by all the public, as you can imagine, and they're voted in for a specific reason, et cetera. And so, what else can you tell us about the property itself, as opposed to, is there anything that would keep you from doing a one, single car garage, and being within the?
Well, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, the existing neighborhood for one, I mean, every other house in the neighborhood has a two-car attached, which they've also received a variance for the same type of building, I believe, or structure. As far as the hardship, I mean, if it was a one-car garage, I wouldn't bother them.
Well, you, well, you wouldn't have to, because it wouldn't require a variance. It's, we're always kind of caught in that catch-22, which is, well, everybody speeds, so why can't I speed with them? And I understand that in the past, maybe these other garages were approved.
Okay.
But I'm wondering if there's any, what is the bump out? Is that from your house, or is that property-related?
The bump out is existing in the, in the structure itself.
Yeah.
The main house, that's where the washing drive was, that was from the building, that wasn't anything.
So, you'd be utilizing that as part of the?
Yes. Yeah, so that would be lost inside of...
And this is 10 feet, right, that you're asking? So, how, how far does that put you away from neighbors?
Line. From their line, it's 10 feet.
Correct.
Yeah.
And my neighbor, actually, the fact that he's right there.
But he's not gonna be your neighbor forever, that's why, so the variance goes with the land?
I see. I'm just trying to explain to you the law, which is, the next neighbor that comes in, the next neighbor, the next...
Right.
But the garage is, I mean, the garage is gonna be there, period.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not like it's a usage variance or something like that, it's, the garage is up, and if the next buyer goes, oh, my God, the house, that garage is too close, they'll go, no, I don't want that house, and they'll move on.
And it could hurt the value of the neighbor, too, with the, being so close to the property. That's it. And you said your neighbor, all the houses, I drove around there pretty extensively, your very next neighbor to the right of you, facing your house, does not have one.
Correct, that is actually the neighborhood.
Okay, so, that's it, the guy who left us, I know that.
Yeah, who left, anybody across the street.
Okay. No, and again, I'm not...
They've all received variance, I'm not saying just because they have issue.
Prior to, yes.
I mean, there are, you know, what I see is there, it's an R30 lot, they're, you know, looking at the map even right now. You know, the gentleman, if we're looking at your house...
I have it right here.
The gentleman who is to your left, who would be the affected abutter, you know, is still, what, 25, 35 feet on that side? You know, so...
And I always put it in this term, I'd love to have a garage, but I can't, because I can't show hardship, because my garage would be within setbacks. So, I always show, share that with people, I would love to have one.
That's, that's why there's a board, because every, every piece of property is, you know, is different. If you look, is your garage expected to extend beyond the width of your driveway?
No, not at all.
Though, yeah, but it'll be right to that line of the neighbors, so the neighbor will be looking at...
So, it'll be 35 feet from the neighbor's house at that point?
I don't know what the setback is, the neigh, how far the neighbor is away. I didn't look at the neighbor's house.
Well, I'm just assuming it's built to...
All I did was look at that house, at his driveway, his driveway's probably 22, 3 feet, something like that. It's pretty much, maybe a foot wider, there's something, a foot, foot and a half wider than his driveway, would be my guess.
What is the, what's the setback supposed to be?
20 feet.
20 feet.
It's R30, that's 35, 30, and 20 side, yes.
Yep, 20.
So, he's asking for 50%.
Roughly, yes, just on the...
So, if he were asking maybe for 25%, I could see a better... What we're debating here is that if, in terms of the amount of use of variance that you're asking from the bylaw, and we tried to get very low variances, meaning the percentage of how much you're requesting, is there any way that you could go down to maybe just five feet instead of 10? What's the width of the garage now?
The width of the garage is...
24 feet in the back, which is the back where you're measuring your setback from.
I've been told by the builder, which is Peter Murphy, is that, they stand aside from...
Keep in mind, if he went back 10 feet from the house...
Yeah.
He could be 10 feet off the line.
And it wouldn't affect the neighbor's value?
I drew that on here as well.
So, I mean, that would be...
Well, I don't, I disagree with you that it would affect the, the value of, I mean, it's in keeping with the neighborhood, what he's asking, and it's actually less than what he got approved for a few years ago, because last time it was, you know, memory serves me, it was a nice plan of a two-car garage with a living space over, so in this case now, you know, the neighbors actually have less to see when they look out the three windows that are on that side of the house.
Well, as, as we've learned, these areas are becoming, as we advance, much more up to scrutiny, and so, if we allow, you know, a 50% variance, we have the ability of other people to come in and say, well, he got 50%, why can't I get 35? Why can't I get 55? Like, it's that old slippery slope argument. So, I'm trying to bring it, dial it back just a little bit, to see if we can come into, or try to make suggestions to come under 25%. There are other communities that I know that keep it under 10% and under 5.
And zero, some.
Most water is zero. And I know this is hard, but we're seeing with other cases that we've heard, people coming in and saying, like you said, and we have it here as well, well, they got one, why can't I have one? And then you slowly defeat the whole bylaw anyways.
Well, I think...
I think that would be more of an eyesore, to be quite honest with you, I think.
I'm just, I pointed out what is, could be allowed by right.
All I'm doing is saying, well, if you...
With no voting.
Right, and we're not doing any, I'm just suggesting if we went down five feet, then you're only asked for a 25% amount of variance, as opposed to...
But then it's not a two-car garage, in this day and age.
You can have a single door, and with a two-car, you could come up with a sing, one single large door and make it with, rather than having two separate garage doors.
And the new bylaw puts our parking spaces at nine feet apiece wide for development. That puts it at 18 feet, which if he goes 25 feet, that gives him an additional seven.
I don't know, I don't see, I don't see your, like, all of a sudden, there's a, a line that says, you know, 45 or 40% is okay, 50% isn't, I mean, you have to look at each piece of property separately, which is exactly why we're here. You know, if it was, it was hard and fast, it would not be a zoning board of appeals.
But, again, just so you'll know, the definition of variance, and it's only in rare circumstances, and under exceptional circumstances, that relaxation of the general restrictions established by the state ought to be permitted, the power granted is only for the relief of specific instances peculiar in their nature, issued sparingly, and only if all the statutory pre-records have been made, so that...
So, the peculiar instances, that's where his driveway is?
Well, peculiar is, applies to the parcel, not to his driveway, not to the house.
But that's, you can't remove the driveway from the parcel.
Yes, you can, that's, you can move a driveway anywhere. The parcel, the way the parcel is done is it has to be in shape, affected by shape locust. The hardship alleged must arise from the shape of the locus, the property, or one of the other factors specifically referred to in section 10. An applicant for a variance must show the land's shape, alone or in combination with other features of the land prohibits development consistent with the ordinance. When the applicant makes such a showing, hardship can be found to exist. So, he has to show that the shape doesn't allow him to be in R30, and it does, because he has housing in R30.
Except that, in order to go straight on ahead, he'd have to put the garage, detach it from the house, and then push it back towards the pool. So, that, that alone...
That's the law, yes.
Can be considered a hardship.
No, it's not, because that's not the shape of locust. That's his development, do you understand, but hardship must arise from the shape of locust of the property.
Thank you.
So, he can still put the garage in, he just has to put it in in cooperation with the bylaws. I'm suggesting the percentage so that it's, you know, not as high.
So, at the same time, Mr. Jenkins has permission to go ahead and do what was granted to him a couple of years ago.
Okay, then I'm gonna do that.
And he could do that and not finish it out, and so, in that instance, he would have a larger structure there.
Did you check whether or not that is still a...
I don't know. I'm sorry, like I said, they, they asked me...
I had a building here last night, and, yeah, he wasn't available tonight, and this is all...
Yeah, I don't know when it was.
But I'm actually...
All right.
I'm pretty shocked that I could have gone, for one, if I put a garage 10 feet back in the middle of a property, that would, that would look worse. This is aesthetic to the neighborhood.
But it's not an aesthetic by...
It's every other neighborhood, if you look at the, if you look at the, where the property lines are, they're within 10 feet of those property lines. I'll go up and measure, I've, I've seen it. I look at it, this one, two, three houses directly in front of me, one over to the side, and there's additional ones on that street.
Did the other...
I understand, sir, I'm just stating that, you know, I'm just stating...
I'll just move, I don't know, I just, this is ridiculous, but, okay.
Well, the other thing, too, is that, you know, we can suggest, you know, we table it, we consider it, I could do this in terms of the next meeting, and you could take a look at some of the suggestions that were made.
I mean, I have a closing tomorrow, which I'm supposed to be doing the refinancing to pay for this, so now I'm gonna have to cancel that.
At this point, let me open it to the floor, please. State your, state your name, please, and your address.
Bob Neville, 32 Crabtree Lane, next to Mark. Everybody in that, in on our street has a garage, but myself, I'm just saying, do they, well, they all granted variances, because they, all the lots are pretty much the same. And I'd say, it seems like he's the exception to the rule, I don't know where this rule came from anyway, he already got it approved. Seems to me that, I would say, almost everyone in that neighborhood is pretty much a similar lot, so, in fact, the houses were built by the same build, you know, pretty much the same builder. So, I think there'd be the same problem, so it sounds like most of the neighborhood got a variance, including Mark, a couple of years ago I was here.
Right.
So, I don't see what the real issue is, I know, two neighbors that are adjourned, are next to him, have no problem with it, and, yeah, there might be, you know, 50 years from now, there may be another neighbor, but it'll be established, and I, and they wouldn't buy it, it bothered them, so, I think this is a lot of, you know, I think it's a silly rule that nobody cares about.
Well, unfortunately, the townspeople voted on it, that's who put this in place, is the bylaws.
But I'm saying, how many people got this, got it, got the variance in my neighborhood? Do you have any right in that? Is everyone on the street getting...
See, now we're running into what we ran into, that's why I was suggesting the percentage.
Yeah, but it's the opposite, he's the exception to this rule, it sounds like everyone's...
Well, it sounds like his lot, they couldn't build a garage, and that's why, because it would have been within the setbacks.
We don't know that.
We don't know that, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I couldn't put a garage on my property if I wanted the additional expense, my body.
I'm not saying that this job is easy for anyone at all, I'm just stating what I'm trying to figure out in terms of the hardship itself. You know, I see a bowed landline on the left side, which gives me more reason for sort of that side, because I could say the locust, see the left side there? If you moved it over there, you'd be too much into it, right?
Yeah, there's, I doubt there's any room on the left.
On that, and, sir?
If, oh, yeah, I, I would like...
I'm sorry, your name, sir?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Richard Carter, 48 Crabtree Lane, I was neighbor on the, on the other side with the, with the boom property. And I just want to point out that that entire development, when it was laid out and accepted way back when, was an R20 zone. It got changed to an R30 zone after half, and more than half the houses on the, on Crabtree Lane, and all the houses in Bayberry, they were all part of the same development, that were already built. And it's, it's one of those, and it was done just because when they did the, redid the, the zoning map and everything, they did the whole blanket area, and we, we went up at the time and talked to them and said, hey, what about us? We should be R20 and 50.
It's the side yard.
And they said, oh, your grandfather, you don't have to work. And, well, so we took them at their word, and then eventually, the, the subdivision charter ran out, or whatever you call it, and then all of a sudden, magically, any of these lots that left, oh, you can't build on them, because they're not R30, and everybody's had to get a, a variance just to build on them.
Right.
And, and that particular property...
Is a 20,000 square foot lot, yeah.
It's a 20,000, actually, it's a, yeah, more than 20,000, it's actually bigger than a lot of the development, you know, a lot of the lots in that development, but it was, it was built, the house was built by a builder on spec, he built it and then sold it, and it's one of those, so, I mean, that's probably why the garage wasn't there, was he could, he could get the most amount of money out of what he put in there, without what ever happened to the garage on there. I'm just giving you a little history on it, you know, and, and I, I too, I can't see why everybody else around there got developments up and down the street that put a garage on.
Right.
And mostly, it's because it was originally 20,000, you know, it's originally an R20 zone, and the houses were built closer to the edge, and it's difficult to put in a, put in the two-car garage. And the zoning board, over the years, has been granting variances for these things up and down the street. I'm, I'm just pointing out the whole thing, and I, and I, I think it's, it's being unfair to Mark, if all of a sudden you singled him out at this date to take it away, especially if you gave him, you gave him the variance a couple of years ago, I mean, that, that's all I had, just to say.
Do you have a copy of the variance from a couple of years ago?
Thank you.
Why don't I see if I can find it?
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
Yes, if you want me to see if I've got it?
761 Randolph Street, I'd actually just stop by, but, like, most of the lots in Abington, they're non-conforming now because of the zoning changes. These lots were conforming when they were built, the zoning laws were changed, and that's why they're not conforming, you know, I, you know, I, I don't see a problem with granting someone a lot, they want to put on a huge addition, it might be different, but, you know, we're seeing that all around the town, especially up in the Greenswood area, those people got hit the worst with the zoning bylaws.
Well, I would love to see, Mr. Zantzen, I'm glad you're here, I would love to see something go on the floor in front of the, you know, town, town membership, town meeting. I mean, I don't enjoy some of these hearings because of what you just stated. If the law can be changed and the town voters want to do that, I'm, you know, I'm exceptionally open to that. It's just that I'm...
I'm not sure that there could be a zoning change now, because where do you draw the line? The only alternative they have is a variance, or a special permit on the zoning board.
Well, we did do a significant change in 2005.
We're not gonna go back to an R20 zone.
No, no, that was...
No, that's not gonna happen.
You can, you can move things in terms of, if, if you even did the setbacks, you could do the setbacks, you could do something specific.
Maybe work on some of these that were R20, and change the setbacks, it gives them a little more leniency.
I'm, like I said, I want what the voters want, and that's all I try to do here. Let me see what was done in the past, and I'll see if...
Is there relief in here?
Like I said, I just have to go by...
Well, I appreciate it, because, again, you get to see how difficult these are, these are...
No, I understand.
These are, you know, these are very, very difficult, and I appreciate it, I, like I said, I, I'm looking for, you know, a lot of these, it would be great if we had clear definition from our constituents and from the people voting. I just go on what is in the printed, printed law, so, can I just take a peek?
Yeah, one minute.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Well, you see, it's exactly like that, nothing has been changed, it's just...
Well, this may help me.
Nothing has been changed.
What date we have?
And I think Mr. Zantzen does make a good point, that if this built property was indeed built upon when it was an R20, and then the change, the zoning has changed to now to an R30, that alone can help create a hardship, you know, for this.
So, you...
To me, I think it's a matter of a, a common sense decision, rather than a...
This is 2010.
A literal enforcement decision.
See, it was not.
Yeah. So, this, it's punched, so there's your date, November, so it's two, we, two years from the dime punch.
So, variances in the year, special permits, too.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna close it to the floor, and bring it back to the table. Again, guys, I see it that, you know, if this was an R20 at one point, now it's an R30, I mean, there's, in my mind, there's the hardship you're looking for, Mr. Reynolds. You know, and again, what he's asking for is in keeping with the neighborhood.
What do you do in future cases?
You take each and every one as they come.
Well, we gonna sit back and say...
It's not about the percentage, it's about...
No, I'm not saying percentages, I'm asking...
Well, that's where you seem to be leaning.
No, I'm not, what you're assuming, I guess. I'm just saying, someone else comes in, in the future, in another street or something, so we keep on going back, going back, because at some point, everything did go back, that's, they just changed some recently on the highway commercial, and that's been flopping back and forth, so...
What's, like I said, if, if it was built at one spec, and then that neighborhood's spec has changed in terms of zoning, you know, my house is six feet off the line, I wanna do anything I have to come before here.
In terms of the past variance that was allowed, section one, I would agree with, that it would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Section two, I can't, because it would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner, however, I would modify that with the fact that he had received this. So, he's counting on this past agreement, so I'd have to put that in the notes, Nancy, that he's counting on something that he got before. I see that as more applicable to that section. The relief can be granted without substantial, to the public good, and again, that would be the difference in this particular variance, in my mind, would be the fact that he received this in the past, and had made movements, financial, I believe, in reliance on this, so...
And I agree with what he's saying.
I can't, the only, the only rea, the reason I would be supportive of this is because of your reliance, you shouldn't have...
Is there some way you could wear this, so this cannot come back and bite us on other cases? cases?
Well, that, I would, I would remove that a literal enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner as a reliance on this past decision and cite this past decision.
You following what we're trying to, I'm trying to get at, so that we can't be thrown back at us.
Because it is a factor, it's not only that, but I consider.
One at a time, please.
You, you're being given an exception, then this guy wants it, and they're gonna cite your case, and that's what we don't want.
See, it's a lone, shape or a loner in combination with other features of the land prohibits. One feature of the land was that he was allowed to do it in the past.
Yeah.
And the development's consistent, so I would make the argument that you made a showing that you were allowed to do this in the past and that that was a feature of the land, because I'm, this is the first time I'm hearing it, and so I'm gonna consider this a feature. If it gets tested, it gets tested, sir. But I'll at least make that argument that it's a feature of the land that you relied upon, and I can back here to really grab another. You're getting another bite at the apple. Take the whole apple.
It would seem consistent to think that if he was granted something larger before and he comes back before us for something similar but smaller.
What he relied on. That's the key ingredient in the bylaws, that he relied on what he had. So future people wouldn't have that characteristic with the locus, okay? I'm putting some interpretation there.
Since you're putting interpretation, I'll let you make that.
I'd like to make a motion now that the town of Abington Board of Appeals will allow for a variance to thirty-eight Crabtree Lane in Abington for a ten-foot, correct, side?
Right. Nine point five.
That's what he got before, is a ten-foot side yard.
Yeah, okay.
And based on what I'm seeing here, it's actually nine point eight feet, so, yeah, give him a ten-foot, because it's the same language that was used in the last relief that he was granted, and that's consistent with your interpretation.
All right, ten-foot side yard variance to attach two-car garage on dwelling thirty-eight Crabtree Lane, under Avenue zoning laws, section one seventy-five twenty-nine, one seventy-five sixty-nine, the property is located in Assessor's Plan Thirty-seven, plot one nineteen, in the R thirty zone, and I'm applying, where's my, where's that variance?
He gave it back to the chair.
I just want to read it into the record, this is part of my motion, that, again, we would find specifically that it's keeping in the characteristic, number one, that the literal enforcement of the, would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner as to his reliance on a past issuance. Relief grant be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, the petitioner does not nullify or substantially deviate from the attempted zoning bylaw, which is obviously, the petition is granted as per revised or as per submitted, not revised, it's per submitted at this point, and I would make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. I'm glad I got to see that.
Thank you.
You take care.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to end the hearing?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.